Call this meeting to order, please. Pile into electronic devices so we can conduct our business and stand for the invocation given by council members. Please join me for the Lord's Prayer. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name.
Thy name will come, and thy glory be on earth as it is in heaven.
Give us today our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. Lead us not into temptation, but to the rest of man. Now please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Any public comments?
No, it's not.
No communications at this time? The next city council meeting will be held on Monday, January 8th, 2024, 7:00 PM, at the City Hall Council Boardroom, second floor, City Center. There will also be our reorganization meeting. If we want, we can do the swearing-in, or excuse me, the swearing-in of the new police sergeant. Who is playing the lieutenant chief?
I, the deputy police.
To Solomon Square.
To Solomon Square.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the City Charter of the City of the State of New York.
And the City Charter of the City of the State of New York.
And that I faithfully discharge the duties.
And I don't faithfully discharge the duties.
Of police sergeant.
Of police sergeant.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
The BDC presentation.
Council President, if I may, did we not have any public comments? Okay, sorry. I missed that on my checklist. I'm sorry. Okay, yeah, you did read that already, okay. Hi. Good evening, thank you. Yes. You have a 20-page presentation, or probably even more than that. It's a little bit bigger than a couple of years in the past. The BDC was very busy this year, so I'm going to, I would like to talk for 40 minutes, but I'm gonna do my best to keep it to 10.
Take 11.
I appreciate that, thank you. So, in the first couple of pages, you'll find just a little bit of information about who the BDC is. Over the past year, we have hosted multiple walking tours throughout downtown Batavia. The Deputy Secretary of State has been out once or twice. We've taken her and her crew through the city. Different representatives from our grant funders. And so it is one of probably our highlights throughout the year, is that we are the key organization for the walking tours. As always, the BDC continues to work with and collaborate with our partners that include La Bella, Szysinski Counseling and Consulting, and GCEDC. We also have weekly meetings with the city manager, so we stay abreast together of everything that's going on in the community. The page that shows about the businesses, the city of Batavia asked for the Greater Rochester Enterprise. There are 607 businesses in the city of Batavia. In 2022, 78% of those businesses had 20 employees or less. In the last year, we've seen that increase to 88%. So 88% of our businesses in the city of Batavia have 20 employees or less. Next page about the labor force. It'll be on the PowerPoint. So, a labor force in the city of Batavia, 7,496. This includes individuals who are working, but it also includes those who are unemployed and are seeking employment. This is different than the amount of employees that we actually have in the city of Batavia. We have 9,346 employees per the Greater Rochester Enterprise in the year of 2023. So that tells us that there's about 1,800, a little over 1,800 people who actually commute into the city for work. If we look at where our greatest businesses are, we see that they're in office and administrative support in the city. These two pages sort of tell us, the information that comes from them, that we don't see a lot of big industry coming into downtown. So our focus, the second half of this year, really went hard and heavy on making Batavia the place to live, play, and work. We want to work in the city of Batavia, but we want to live and play here. We've been focusing a lot on housing and making Batavia this, which already is, but just emphasizing what a great place it is to live and be. As always, the BDC is led by the City Planning Initiatives, the Batavia Opportunity Area Comprehensive Plan, and the DRI. The next couple of pages will focus on the Batavia Opportunity Area. The BOA has a local steering committee with consulting service. We have regular meetings to determine the best opportunities for developing prioritized sites that potentially might qualify as brownfields as well. So you'll see the map where we have five prioritized sites. We have Creek Park, Elecet Station, the City Center, the medical corridor, which is actually our Healthy Living Campus, and the Harvester Center, or the Harvester Campus. This group, when it meets regularly, we work on updating conceptual drawings and renderings of what it would look like when Creek Park is all, you know, developed. Also, what would JCPenney's look like if it was something different? What if JCPenney's was housing, or just a different retail space that didn't look like what we've acclimated to always seeing JCPenney's look like? The Creek Park redevelopment, or the development site we now know as Creek Park. Creek Park is currently, has been having its Phase II environmental sample testing done. The city graciously had a consultant perform the testing. All the parcels were tested, and the consultant is currently working on a draft report. What we'll see in the next couple of weeks is based on the initial findings. They'll be preparing a brownfield cleanup program pre-application to send to the DEC to determine if it actually qualifies for the brownfield cleanup program. Next, you'll see part of the law, another target, or prioritized target site being the City Center. So we'll see some new entryways come in this year. But also, I do want to point out that in the corridor of the City Center, where it's the indoor of the Theater and Islands Restaurant, there was an old flowerbed that's in there, so we put a deck in there. I actually wrote a small grant to the Arts Council, and I have a large sculpture coming in there. It's gonna be an I-beam, an ironwork tree that's gonna come in and replace there. So keep an eye out, that'll be done this month. The redevelopment site of the Healthy Living Campus, not sure if anyone was able to make the topping out ceremony, but it was pretty interesting. So there is a ceremony a few weeks ago. It's called Topping Out, and it's where they raise the last beam. And it goes back to the year of like 800. It's a Scandinavian tradition, and it's to do like an honor to the gods, that the site will be brought good luck, and it'll be prosperous. So there's a picture of the last beam being brought in. And the other photo is if you have a, if you're gonna be on a treadmill in the new Healthy Living Campus, that would be the site out the window. Here's your Murphy on the treadmill.
Minus the building there, because that's coming down.
Minus the building, yes, to the right. You will not see that. You'll be able to see more of Main Street than this one. More of our beautiful downtown. The plans, the comprehensive plan, there's a chart of sort of like assigned tasks of goals in the back of the comprehensive plan. So I pulled out a couple of them to talk this evening that the BDC is involved in. One is continued investment in Harvester Center, also to support small business and foster incubators, and then redevelop vacant and underutilized buildings and parcels. Do you have what's happening at the Harvester Center? So through some of the BDC's, I should say my personal relationships with individuals, I was able to help Wendy Brew come in and open up their second site over in Harvester, and also Beaver Bear with her Caribbean restaurant that's in the commissary kitchen. And so we're ever supportive of the happenings over there. Business and incubator support. We do have the City Center concourse that's still being utilized on different Saturdays each month for the indoor market. A couple of our indoor market vendors created an online market. They, two of our vendors run the South Wedge Market in Rochester and the Leroy Farmers Market. So they created an online link that we, the days that the market is going to be open on a Saturday, that week before, on Tuesday through Thursday, we can use the online link, go out and buy anything we want, pay for it online from any of their other vendors that are at the other markets in Rochester. And they will bring it here, and we pick it up on that Saturday that it's open downstairs. We also, with our small business support, we've invested monies into, through the revolving loan fund, into some of our small businesses. So you have the redevelopment or the renovations over at Alberti Drugstore, over at Slatz for the Del Plano Casey Law Firm, and the patio out back at E. L. Fish. Focus on vacant and the underutilized in the city of Batavia. Last month, we had a developers tour, the BDC, where we invited upwards of 130 different developers and professionals involved in commercial development to take a tour around our sites throughout the city that we've identified as either blighted areas or underutilized. It was quite successful. Up to the tour date, we were already having individual meetings with developers and saying, what is it that you're interested in in the city? We partner well here, and we listen. So we want to grow our partnerships to see more development in the city. The areas that are on here, this picture alone, I think, is great. We have physically had a hand in all of the buildings that are in this photo, straight down Main Street. If we look at the buildings from Hunt Real Estate down to WVTA, we've had a hand in each one of them.
And Cars is coming soon.
Cars is coming soon, so yes. On the next page, we have the DRI initiative. So we have eight projects that were supported by the DRI award. The City Center, which we spoke about, is having the new entryways. Elecet Place, which has the Stable Lot Building, has 10 market rate apartments upstairs, and City View Apartments. All of the rental space that was in the Stable Lot Building that we call, that's named Elecet Place, is currently rented out, so it has zero vacancy in that entire building. The Healthy Living Campus, I skipped Cars Reborn, we will see Cars. We should see that start some construction, late winter, early spring. Theater 56, the last three in the list on the DRI, I actually have a little focus on in the next pages. So our cultural investment into Theater 56, which is done. They're having shows in there. Their dance studios are gorgeous. We actually started our developers tour in the theater. Two of our developers actually were the contractor for the theater. So it was interesting to have everyone there under one roof. Jackson Square has started its construction. It'll be paused most likely for the winter, and we are looking to have this completed before the Bid's concert series starts. So we'll look for a nice big ribbon cutting probably in the beginning of June. And then the Building Improvement Fund. So as I said, the DRI had eight projects. One of them was the Building Improvement Fund, managed by the BDC, had an additional five projects in it. I just did a presentation for the Department of State that was before and after for each of these projects. So I did include pictures of 242 Elecet Street. You have the before and after to create market rate apartments over there. 99 Main Street, which we can see is still under construction. It's the last project to be finished in the Building Improvement Fund for the DRI. This will be first floor dentist office, second floor office space, and the third floor, two apartments, market rate apartments with a mezzanine level. And you can see there's outdoor terrace area. And then 3943 Jackson Street had facade renovation done, and a little bit of improvements on the inside. We completed two New York Main Street contracts this year. The one was a building improvement contract, had six. Now look at the next page. Had six program projects in it. It's part of the next slide's presentation. And it was a $300,000 grant that completed this year. And the reuse analysis for the Brisbane Magic was also on New York Main Street program. So instead of doing what, we've had slides in the past that show like overall all the projects that the BDC has done, and what their assessment value was, is, and the change. I just focused on showing you, so you can really see the math of the buildings that were involved in the New York Main Street grant that closed out this last year. And there were six projects. It was a $300,000 grant award. It was about 150, or about 1, I take that back. It was $1.15 million total in building renovations in this project, of all six of those. Each grant was about $50,000. Previously, before the renovations were done through this program, total those six sites, their tax assessments totaled a little over $1.2 million. It was an increase by those renovations of almost $640,000, just in that little bit of grant money that went into, and then their own investment. That's just one, that's just one program. And then the last page. So with GCEDC, we work with, and it fails me what Tim's last name is, but he has these great drone photos. So we're gonna fly through the Creek Park in a flight, he'll drone up through the Creek bed and everything. And so I had to put one of my favorite pictures in there. So, yes. I don't think I went 40 minutes. I think I probably did do 11, 12, maybe even 13. So if we would've put it on the screen, I guarantee you it'd have 40 all day long.
Any questions? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good progress. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you. Thank you for having me. Thank you.
John? We have a competition for you to do. Do you have it now?
That's fine.
Step right up. Thank you. You're hard work. Where is John Canelli? Council member of the City of Batavia City Council retired his elected seat, will be retiring on December 31st after 12 years of service to the city and the Third Ward. Upon his appointment, John took office on January 1st, 2012, quickly became a staunch advocate for the citizens and businesses within the Third Ward, lobbying for resources and services. Prior to and during his time on City Council, John has owned and operated Canelli's Drum Studio, and has actively been involved in the local business community for more than 28 years by encouraging small business development and expansion in the city. John has been involved in many musical activities and organizations of all varieties, including the St. Paul Lutheran Church School, as well as his involvement with people with developmental disabilities through Genesee ARC and other agencies. During his tenure as council member, John was a true public servant, winning the Supportive Award in three conservative elections, advocating for residents and neighborhoods, and always giving the best interest of the city of Batavia. Now therefore, be it resolved, the City Council of the City of Batavia does hereby congratulate John Canelli, City of Batavia Council Member, on his retirement, and wish him and his family good health and happiness for years to come.
You all know I'm usually a gloss for words. I'll just say a few. First of all, this is way more than I deserve it now, but very much appreciated. 12 years, I tried to serve the community the best I could. I'm kind of glad that I followed Tammy's presentation tonight by accident, because I was late. But that's exactly what I had envisioned 12 years ago when I got involved with the city. The city was not in that great of shape back then, and I think that's kind of how I ended up getting into politics, is that my wife got fed up with hearing me complain about the city of Batavia, and said, why don't you just do something about it? And so I did. But that's exactly what I envisioned 12 years ago, is what Batavia is starting to look like today. And I think that's probably what I'm most proud of. This, you have to understand something. This has been probably one of the most rewarding and fulfilling experiences I've ever had in my entire career, and I have worked in many, many different industries. People always say to me, why do you do it? And I said, why not? And I love it. And they look at me like I'm nuts. You love it? You love people constantly complaining? I said, it's not like that. You have no idea. It's extremely fulfilling to me with everything that I do in a day. I kind of likened it to the game of golf. I love to get out on the golf course, because when I'm golfing, everything in my head disappears, and I concentrate just on my game. And when I come to council meetings and special meetings that we have, and budget meetings, it has the same exact effect on me. I come here, it gives me a chance to clear my head and focus on one of the things that's most important to me, and that's the city of Batavia. Born and raised here, I have so much invested in this community, family-wise, business-wise. I just hope that you guys just keep going the way you guys are going. It's been an absolute honor to work with my fellow council people. And what the city of Batavia does not realize is the amount of talent that we have. I learned that very quickly, and it's been like that for 12 years. The management staff and our other staff, unbelievable talent that we have working for the city of Batavia. And I just hope we can continue on the path that we're going. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
End of the year purchase report?
Thank you, Council President. As we were going over budget requests for the following year, from time to time, there's requests that can't be honored in the next year's budget. So working with the fire chief, we were able to put together a list of requests that we'd like permission to use VLT funds for this year. And the chief is unable to be here, but we have a guest appearance from Captain Herberger, who will explain some of these items, so we have a full understanding of what they are, what they do, and why they're needed. Captain, thank you.
The first item there is the automated external defibrillators. I think everybody's pretty much familiar with them. You see them in public buildings. We carry them pretty much on every piece of apparatus. Really important to have that piece of equipment now. So they age out, just like any piece of equipment, and we're looking to replace for.
And they're at their end of their life for recommended replacement.
Correct.
Yep.
The next item, dry suits. With our swift water rescue team, again, these suits get kind of aged out. One particular piece here is that we need some smaller ones, because we have some smaller frame individuals. They can fit in them, but it's kind of like, they don't fit well. So we're looking to replace. Ice rescue suits. Again, some of these are getting up to 10, 12 years old. They just, they wear out with training and whatnot. So we're looking to replace three of those suits. And portable radios, that's the piece of equipment that we use pretty much every day. And then, just with the use, and I don't want to say abuse, but they get used pretty hard. So we're looking to replace six of those radios.
I know, I'm not here on that just for one second. Council, historically, since I've been here, we have done a lot better at replacing radios in bundles, because they were originally purchased in 2018, 19?
I think it was a little before that, yeah.
As a bulk purchase through a grant with Genesee County. And after that, we have definitely tried to coordinate for other grant funds, but we have not been successful in getting a grant to replace them all. So there needs to be replacement, and typically, it's something we can't commit to this many replaced in each budget year. So at the end of the year, I know police and fire have requested them with VLT funds for replacement. So thank you.
And then the last item is our turnout gear, basic firefighting turnout gear. With health initiatives and a cancer initiative, we're striving to have everybody into two sets a year, so after a fire, after it gets soiled, can immediately become washed. We have a washer extractor at the firehouse, but it takes time to dry properly and whatnot, so members can get out of their dirty turnout gear, get into their backup turnout gear, and get properly washed. Believe it or not, having two sets of turnout gear and keeping it cleaner kind of extends the life of the primary set. So we're looking to purchase four sets there.
So that's a total of $48,791, though?
Correct.
Any questions?
Yeah. How many people use the dry suits?
I don't have the total number. We have swift water rescue technicians, and off the top of my head, I believe we have 12.
And do the dry suits have the rubber necks and rubber cuffs?
Correct.
So they should be, technically, they're supposed to be cut per person, per the...
Yes.
I have two dry suits we use in the Coast Guard Auxiliary.
In the real world, yes. The ones that we buy, there's a little bit of leeway there with who they fit and how they fit. But we're gonna buy some smaller ones to fit some of the smaller frame people, just to make that fit a little better.
I mean, is there a concern about leakage, like around the neck? And then you have a suit full of water, you're going to the bottom.
Yeah, I mean, that's always a concern, yeah. Nothing's that bad.
How many do we have now?
There is a total of, I believe, 10? I don't know off the top of my head. Not everybody's issued one with a piece of equipment that we share, I guess. Yeah, not an ideal.
It'd be ideal if every team member that would use them had their own. That would be ideal.
Ideal, but you gotta balance that with cost and...
Thank you.
Anyone else? So, are we in consensus to move this to tonight's business meeting for a vote?
Yes.
Okay, can we just move? So, a motion to adjourn the council meeting. Mr. Beely, seconded by Ms. Richmond. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Beely?
Yes.
Twitchell?
Yes.
Canelli?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Okay, now, I'll order the regular business meeting. You've all been given a copy of the October 2023 financials. Are there any questions or concerns on those? So, are we in consensus to approve the October 23 financials? Okay, those are approved. You've been given a copy of the November 23 minutes. Any questions or concerns on those? Are we in consensus then to approve the November 2023 minutes?
Yes.
Those get approved. We have several agenda items. We'll issue those, assign those now. Item 114, 2023, the various committees and boards' appointment, Mr. Richmond. 115, 2023, the Business Improvement District Plan, Mr. McGinnis. 116, 2023, the Police Department Budget for the Bulletproof Fest Award, Mr. Twitchell. 117, 2023, the Police Budget for the D W I Funds, Mr. Byakowski. 118, 2023, the Reserve for the Wi-Fi, Ms. Beely. 119, 2023, the Contingency and Reserve Accounts Additional Revenue, Mr. Canelli. 120, 23, the Prosecutorial Services of Genesee County, Mr. McGinnis. 121, 2023, the Council Meeting Schedule, Mr. Beely. 122, 23, the Scheduling of a Public Hearing for the Zoning Change, Mr. Twitchell. 123, 2023, the Agreement Between the City Manager and the City of Batavia, Ms. Briggs. And 124, 2023, the Equipment for the Fire Department we just talked about, Mr. Byakowski. City Attorney, do you have anything to report today?
Council President, since we reported on last, we have been busy. We've continued to work on a variety of matters across the spectrum, including general contract matters, real estate matters, claim and insurance matters, the interim foreclosures for the next cycle, we've also worked with code enforcement matters, so it's a continuation of the work that we do as well as servicing the city manager's needs for legal service and the department had questions for legal services as well. There's nothing specific to report on at this time.
Great. Any questions for the City Chairman? Okay, City Managers, report.
Thank you, Council President. As many of you are aware, we have new lights throughout the city, new LED lights, still making sure they're all up. We've got members of the department who drive around at night looking at them, Brett and Tom and myself being some of them, so if there is anything out, please have constituents call. D P W will let them know. They're all under a 10-year warranty, so we can get the light replaced for free. But we are looking to close out that project very soon, so that is exciting. We still may, we plan to have a special meeting on December 21st. I know many of you have gotten your availability back to Krista, so we'll be setting that date to award the police facility contracts on that day. We're continuing to move forward with the Ice Rink Chiller Project. Bids came back for it. It is a design build, which is allowed for this type of project that's being managed by N I P A. So, right now, we're waiting for the official N I P A paperwork so we can move forward. There are some long lead time items that need to be ordered as soon as humanly possible so that they can build the new chiller onsite and try to have it up and running by September. We're working with the operator of the ice rink on a daily basis to keep him informed, and as we get closer, we'll certainly let you guys know. I have some good news on grants. We did receive a $500,000 grant for Austin Park Playground Equipment. Unfortunately, we did not receive a large, I believe it was $750,000 grant for tree replacement from U S D A. So, we are gonna have a debrief meeting to find out why we did not receive that, and we did not receive a grant for Main Street, even though it's been very successful, so I think the B D C is gonna look to put another one in next year. There's still four grants out there that have not been announced yet. One is the Ice Rink Chiller. We expect announcements this week up till about the 17th or 18th. Water meters, we have a grant outstanding for water meters, the Housing Rehab Grant, and then there's a secondary tree grant we applied for, for trees in Centennial Park. So, we will be waiting and watching the next two weeks to see if we are awarded any of those grants this year. Thank you.
Any questions?
Is the city completely done? All the lights, all streets, everything?
They gave us a close, yeah, we have a closeout meeting tomorrow. Tomorrow or the next day, yep. So, yeah, when you drive home, you can see...
They are bright.
All the lights.
Oh, that's incredible.
And they started on Lehigh, like you said, and I'm, my street's next to Lehigh, so within a few days of that initial announcement, you know, I looked out the window and there they were, the lights were up, and on my street, I didn't even see them come through.
It doesn't take them long.
They're moving really quickly on it, so. So, if their light is out, it might be an electrical problem, so you need to call that in, just in case. We had a few that were still out even after the bulbs were replaced, and they were other issues, and they got fixed, and they're working right now. So, we should have them all working. I have a couple of questions. When I looked over the minutes of November, it reminded me of a couple of open-ended things, I just wanted to see if you can update me on them. Did we ever look into the sexual offender on Ross Street that the woman came and complained about at that meeting in November?
We did, and I believe Chief shared information with all of council.
She's been resolved, she got the information she was looking for, or...
Um, I don't know if we contacted her specifically. We can't?
No, I did not have her information to reach out, but...
We can try to get that, sure.
There's no restrictions on where that individual can live, used, registered as a sex offender.
Okay, so we could somehow get back to her so she knows we at least looked into that. And the stop sign on Elecott and Harvester?
Yep.
You did, I did hear talk about it being, it was 1996, I think, is when it was replaced?
Correct, as a stop sign.
So, it's been a stop sign for a long, long time, like over...
That's correct.
Almost 30 years. So, at this point, it's not that big of a hazard. I don't think we're going any farther with it, we're just leaving it?
Yeah.
Okay, just wanted to make sure. That's kinda what I thought, but I just wanted to follow up on that. Anyone else for any questions? Okay, good. No unfinished business, I believe. So, Resolution 114, 2023, Mr. Richmond, please.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution to appoint managers to various city committee boards.
Seconded by Ms. Briggs. Questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Richmond?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Beely?
Yes.
Twitchell?
Yes.
Canelli?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Resolution 115, 2023, Mr. McGinnis, please.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President. I move a resolution, Local Law Number 3 of the Year 2023, entitled "Amending the Business Improvement District Plan."
Seconded by Mr. Beely. Questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Beely?
Yes.
Twitchell?
Yes.
Canelli?
Yes.
Beely?
Yes.
Twitchell?
Yes.
Canelli?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Resolution 115, 2023, Mr. Byakowski, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move a resolution to amend the 2023-2024 Police Department Budget to reflect the receipt of a stopped D W I Grant Amendment in the amount of $2,800 to address the crimes of driving while intoxicated and/or driving while impaired by drugs during specified high visibility engagement campaign periods.
Seconded by Mr. McGinnis. Questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Beely?
Yes.
Twitchell?
Yes.
Canelli?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Beely?
Yes.
Twitchell?
Yes.
Canelli?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Resolution 118, 2023, Mr. Beely, please.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution authorizing use of $5,027 administrative reserve to upgrade the city center Wi-Fi system and amend the 23-24 budget.
Seconded by Ms. Briggs. Questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Beely?
Yes.
Twitchell?
Yes.
Canelli?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Beely?
Yes.
Twitchell?
Yes.
Resolution 120, 2023, Mr. McGinnis, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move a resolution to contract with Prosecutorial Services of Genesee County.
Seconded by Mr. Canelli. Questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Canelli?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Beely?
Yes.
Twitchell?
Yes.
Canelli?
Yes.
Resolution 121, 23, Mr. Beely, please.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution scheduling regular council meetings through December 31st, 2024.
Seconded by Mr. McGinnis. Questions or concerns?
I can't make any of those dings.
Any other questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Beely?
Yes.
Twitchell?
Yes.
Canelli?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Beely?
Yes.
Twitchell?
Yes.
Canelli?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Resolution 122, 23, Mr. Twitchell, please.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution to introduce in ordinance amending Chapter 190, entitled "Zoning of the City of Batavia Municipal Code" and to schedule a public hearing.
Seconded by Mr. Canelli. Questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Twitchell?
Yes.
Canelli?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Beely?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Beely?
Yes.
Twitchell?
Yes.
Canelli?
Yes.
Resolution 123, 23, Ms. Briggs, please.
I move a resolution reappointing city manager and authorizing city council president to execute an employment agreement between the City of Batavia and Rachel J. Tabelski.
Seconded by Mr. Beely. Questions or concerns?
I'm excited.
I'm just gonna restate what I've stated in the past, no reflection on manager whatsoever, but I believe it should be a totally standalone contract and shouldn't be tied in with other employees. Thank you.
Anyone else?
No.
Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Briggs?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Byakowski?
No.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Beely?
Yes.
Twitchell?
Yes.
Canelli?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
You have several agenda items. We'll issue those, assign those now. Item 114, 2023, the various committees and boards' appointment, Mr. Richmond. 115, 2023, the Business Improvement District Plan, Mr. McGinnis. 116, 2023, the Police Department Budget for the Bulletproof Fest Award, Mr. Twitchell. 117, 2023, the Police Budget for the D W I Funds, Mr. Byakowski.